We'll get started. It's a little after seven. Welcome to everyone for our very first ever Zoom virtual city council meeting. Something new every time. With that, be, you know, to try and make it official, the clerk is on. We're going to have her call the roll, record attendance. Hopefully, Ryan, you can unmute it so we can get the those who are in attendance, record that, and then we'll start from there.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Leahy?
I'm present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan? No. Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
I know Mike is trying to call back in, so with that, before we get started, I would like to address a few things because it's our first one. First is to ask for a moment of silence. I know it's on internet, but as we all know, the tragic news coming out of the Hoyoke Soldiers Home, just very terrible time for the city as well as for our veterans. So I'd ask that we all give a moment of silence for our veterans, those families impacted by it, as well, you know, family and friends. So I'd ask for that, please. Thank you. A couple of housekeeping before we get started. First is to thanks, as I mentioned, when we first got together to try and make sure this thing was up and running. I know, once again, Councilor Sullivan is trying to call in for the members of the public. One is to thank Ryan Scott and Mike Bloomberg, who was on today to help out. They were very instrumental in getting this up and running to make sure we had a platform to allow us to keep government running for those in the city. So thank you to Scott, Ryan, and Mike for helping us out. Also, to the police, fire, first responders, nurses, doctors, all the volunteers out there. We can't thank you enough for everything that you're doing, not only in Hoyoke, but all over the place. It's a very tough time. However, the work that is being done out there is greatly appreciated and it does not go unnoticed. So thank you all. Thank you to the City Hall employees, DPW. City Hall, I know some people think it's shut down, but people are going into work each and every day, smaller shifts in order to make sure things are taken care of for people. But we thank, then we thank those who are trying to make sure that those who are getting access to City Hall for important documents that they are taken care of. And we like, we appreciate their support. Finally, to you, the members of the city council, those who are department heads who are online tonight to address certain items on the agenda. Thank you for being a part of this. I know it's a little different from what we're used to. So there's probably gonna be a few hiccups, but please understand that, you know, we're gonna get through it. But to everyone online, thank you. Please stay safe. For the members of the public, our citizens, we're still here. As you can see, department heads are online, looking to help out and get things done. So if you have questions, I know people have called us, emailed us, Facebooked us. Thank you and keep reaching out to us. We are here. Government is still going, so please don't think that it has stopped in any way, shape, or form. But with that, we'll go to the agenda. First item on the agenda is from Anthony Delude, our assessor. It's a letter in order from the city council releasing a hundred thousand for new voting machines. Everyone should have received this. In essence, it's a communication from the assessor saying that we are the office is willing to abide by the order by the city clerk to use hundred thousand from the overlay account for new voting machines. Our office has discussed this procedure with the city clerk amongst the offices and has decided that the project is one that is good for the whole city. Any further information or questions, please hesitate to call. Board of assessors, and that would be from Anthony Delu- or Tony Delude. So that is, he is signing back from our order, saying that they should do it. They're on board, saying that they will do it. It's now up to the mayor to sign off on it.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Make a motion to report to the committee on finance.
So motions are sent to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is to from
Mr. President? Mr. Point of Order? I, I, just because it would be helpful if you call the, how the vote will all happen. So I think just for the record, you might want to say, in that case, I think that was unanimous. Mr. McGivern's motion was unanimous.
So, Councilor McGivern, for those who are at home, the request was to send it to the finance committee. Everyone voted to send it to finance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to take item number two and item number four together?
Motion is to suspend the rules and take up two and four as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So for the public, we took up items two and four. Items two, or item two is from Jesus Praira, Director of the Hoyoke Veterans Affairs, financial transfer. And if you go to item four, that is the transfer, which is from motions, orders, and resolutions that we take fifty-six thousand from stabilization to pay veteran benefits. We're taking up as a package, which everyone voted to do. Under, so that was yes for everyone at home. As now, therefore, we're taking up two and four as a package. I turn it over to Councilor McGivern, if you want to chat about it, or I can
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two, the motion would be to receive, it's a communication from the Director of the Veterans Department. Item number four, I would suggest we move to pass the first reading and see if we can attempt to pass it this evening.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading.
Second.
That was seconded under discussion. Councilor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request for transfer of fifty-six thousand dollars from the stabilization fund. The fifty-six thousand dollars would go into a line item, you know, as veteran benefits. At the beginning of the year, the department asked for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get through the year. And the budget was cut to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I talked with Jesus Praira yesterday. He believes that this would get him through the rest of the fiscal year, with some unknowns about what may happen with the crisis to our veterans and what's going on. However, he has forecast that the fifty-six thousand dollars will get him through. At the moment, he has enough money to make it through April. So if we don't pass it this evening, we're gonna have to take action before the end of April in order for these benefits, which would be still able to give out to the veterans who qualify for them. A reminder that this is the line item that, of whatever we do allocate, whatever we do expend, seventy-five percent of it is reimbursed from the state.
Any questions from any, anyone? Yes. Yes.
I agree to, I greatly support this transfer to take care of our veterans.
So that was from Council Graney to support the measure. Anyone else? Council Bartley?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I think in principle, I, I think we do support this. But, Mr. President, I think we ought to make note that this money is coming from where is that echo?
I'm trying to figure that out. That's why I was
Did somebody get her phone on?
Phone or a TV?
I have a, I have a phone, but I don't have no TV.
All right, so Ryan, can you mute everyone except for Council Bartley?
Yep.
So, in that, in this case, just saying I could hear that echo. So in this case, the, the funds are coming from stabilization. And so where, where are we with the, with the, with the commitment on, on this? So when, so when we receive the reimbursement from, from the Department of Veterans in Boston, where, where, where is, where are those, where does that reimbursement go? Does that reimbursement go back to stabilization? Or does that reimbursement go to the general fund? Because that, that was never made clear. And I'd like to get somebody's position on that, preferably the mayor's office, and, and what, and what kind of is, you know, so where are we going? So I mean, I, I, I think, I think it's fair to say that we all support this. But we've got to keep in mind it's coming from stabilization account. And if we're gonna get seventy-five percent reimbursed by veterans, I, I think it's only reasonable to suggest that we would get the seventy-five percent reimbursed to the stabilization account. So I'd just like to know the department head's position on this and the mayor's position on it. And everybody's muted.
You have to unmute, Ryan. So, Counselor Murphy is up? So his hand up, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. A few things. Number one, I, you know, I agree with what Counselor Bartley just said about the stabilization fund. But I also have some concerns about or just an explanation, and I certainly trust Mr. Praira. But last year, we spent three hundred and forty-eight thousand. So if we approve this fifty-six, we're gonna be having a four hundred and six thousand. And I just would like to get an explanation as to why we are having, are we serving more veterans? Are we paying more each time? Just an explanation of, and that's a significant increase from one year to the next. So that would be you know, approximately thirteen or fourteen percent increase. So I'd like to see if we could get an answer on that particular thing. And the other part would be the seventy-five percent reimbursement. As I understood it, we would not get that until fiscal two thousand and twenty-one. And if, just wanted to know if that is the case. And if that is the case, would like to know if we got the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars from what we provided in fiscal nineteen already.
So we can, normally, we suspend the rules to allow the department head to speak. It is a Zoom meeting. They're here to address the issue, kind of like a subcommittee meeting. So Jesus Praira is on, so we can, if we can unmute him, Ryan, to allow him to address the question.
Yeah, good evening. As far as the money that's being reimbursed by the state, it goes back on the cherry sheet, which I believe you guys or the auditor's office puts back into the general fund. So getting it back into stabilization would be a function of city council, talking to the auditor's department to work that out somehow. I don't have control of that. It's not my function. It's not what I do. As far as how, how much we're spending this year versus last year. Last year, we, we spent close to four hundred thousand dollars. We can't control how many veterans come in and out of our community. As soon as they step into our community, they spend one day here, I have to service them. So if they're eligible for one fifteen, they get those services. The expenditures that has gone up since last year are, our burials went from us paying two thousand of three thousand dollars to four out of five thousand. So that alone brought up what we spent this year, up twenty thousand dollars just by itself. And, you know, it, it's a moving target. We can't control, we don't know how many veterans are gonna be coming in and out of our community, and who's gonna be eligible from day to day. We have a rotating roster of people who are on and off this, this, this benefit. So as they're coming on, we're working on alternative sources of income for them so they can come off our program. But there's been an increase in benefit payout from the state of Massachusetts, also an increase in burial rates from the state of Massachusetts that we pay out. So that's gonna account for the increased payouts throughout this whole year out of that line item.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
So, Jesus, with all, with what's going on at the soldiers' home, would we be expecting that we are going to be having significant funeral payments there?
So, for those to qualify for a chapter one fifteen program, they have to be indigent. So if folks don't have
Okay.
a, like a life insurance policy on hand or something like that, we may have to come up with the cost ourselves to cover that. And there's a residency requirement. So if the individual was in a soldier's home, but maintained a residence somewhere else and never proclaimed that they live in somewhere else and taking their name off of other property. If they take their name off, off of other property and just live in a soldier's home, they're a Hoyoke resident, so we have to service them. And then we do that through our investigation process. So, I mean, there's possibility that we may have to deal with some of those deaths as far as covering the expenditures of the burial and all that. But as of yet, we've only received one phone call for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Bartley had a question?
I do, I do want to interrupt and just say we were informed when we did the practice meeting that we would be using the raise hand function and the participants. And there's been a couple of us waiting.
All right, I, I haven't, the hand hasn't popped up on my side, so
Mr. President, that, that's before I was interrupted. That's what I was, that's what I was gonna say.
Once again, it's a Zoom, so
I just want to make sure that you're aware that, that
Yeah, I'm definitely third in line.
All right, so let's go to, who, whose hand was up? Like I said, the feature's not working on mine, so
Rebecca and Pete were up.
Counselor Lisi and then Counselor Tomlin.
Interesting spelling in your name, Pete.
Yeah, I know. I did that real quick, Dave.
Okay, so thanks. I want to just echo some of the concerns that have already been made about the funding for the veterans' benefits coming out of stabilization. You know, it wasn't really an ideal process, in my opinion, to dump the money that came in from free cash over to stabilization. I, I know what we got the, you know, the, the go-ahead and the okay from Department of Local Services at the state level, that it wouldn't be a problem if we dumped a bunch of money in there and then used it to cover some specific line items. I don't believe that this was one of those light items that was outlined at, at that moment in time. So I'd just like to understand whether or not we could make this transfer out of free cash at this point in time, because that definitely would be my preference. And I know that it may not be something that we could work on tonight, given the, the, the way that the order has been written. But if we can do it out of free cash, I would much rather do that.
Counselor Tomlin will get an answer. I think Mike has an update for free cash, but there was a member that came from the mayor's office for they don't have the funds currently somewhere else, so they're looking from here. But we'll go to Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I, I think this is an important transfer. I really believe we gotta take care of our veterans. I, I understand Counselor Bartley's concern about coming from the stabilization, but with seventy-five percent of the money coming back, and as Mr. Praira said, it goes back into the cherry sheet, which goes back into the general fund. This is an item that was cut early on in the year, and as Jesus explained, there's been some cuts or some added expenses with the, the veterans. And now with especially what's going on, a lot of veterans coming back, there's, there's many more veterans that are looking for services and help. So I'm very much in favor of this. I, I think coming from the stabilization is not exactly the, the greatest place to come from, but as of now, without knowing we have free cash, and hopefully, he could get through the rest of the year with this fifty-six thousand, I'm very much in favor of this transfer.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you. Well, not, not that anybody was mischaracterizing my position, but I, I, I said very clearly to start that I, that I do support the, the, the transfer. I, I simply asked a question relative to the stabilization account. And I'm, and I, at some point, will have to get an answer. It's my understanding, Mr. President, that the stabilization has to, can only be funded through the mayor's office. Since we don't have the mayor here, and we have no representation relative to that, and I know Mr. Bloomberg's here, but I, I can't rely on that. And no disrespect there either. But there, there's, there's no representation from the mayor's office. My simple point to this council, Mr. President, is that it's not gonna get reimbursed, and I think we all know that. But I just want it to be known, very, expressly, expressly known that this is command of stabilization. We do expect a seventy-five percent to be reimbursed by Commonwealth at some point next year, and I appreciate Counselor Murphy pointing that out. But I, I'm, I'm just saying that the odds of that being reimbursed to the stabilization account are nil. One last point, Mr. President. And I think it's important because we, we heard the finance chair say, say the, the amount requested was cut. And, and the finance chair is, as per usual, spot on. But just to clarify the point, Mr. President, the amount was not cut by this city council, Mr. President. It was cut by room one. Room one cut it. City council did not cut a nickel out of this. So we should all be proud of that, but I want that clearly stated on the record, and now it is. City council cut not a penny from this line. The mayor's office cut fifty thousand. Thank you.
Anyone else for a hand?
I
I'm in.
Well, Ryan, can you tell me? Because it's not popping up on my screen as to the hand showing. So I heard Counselor McGivern. I see Counsel Bacon.
Hey, Todd, just for your, just for your own information, if you put up all the recipients, if you go down to the bottom where it says Participants twenty-two, you click on that, then on the right-hand side of your screen, it's gonna list all of us, and it's gonna show the hands popping up. It's gonna show in which order.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. So I have, those are done, those are done. So it's Counselor McGivern, then Counselor Bacon. The order that I'm seeing it.
Thank you, Mr. President, and all good questions and all good concerns. Just if I can try to answer a few of them, and I think Jesus did the actual answering when he spoke to us. The, the request is fifty-six thousand dollars. So let's put it straight first. When we get reimbursed, we'll get forty-two thousand dollars back. So we're being asked to expend an additional fourteen thousand dollars to take care of our veterans through the end of the fiscal year. It's our responsibility to do that, not just as because we want to, but because it is by law. The stabilization is a good question. I should have said more about it in my opening remarks. To Counselor Lisi's viewpoint, this is the free cash that we have. This is where we put the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have a running total that is very close. However, at the moment, we still have wiggle room within the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to continue to use that for these type of items that pop up. The biggest item that we have pending for that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the patrolman's contract. We, we, I believe you're still waiting for the full appropriation for that to come forward. The, this, again, needs, by the end of April, Mr. Praira is gonna run out of money to pay this benefit. It goes to many who are in need or are very, very well screened by our department. It, it goes to, for a purpose that we all, I think, agree with. So if the issue is stabilization, this is the only place at the moment that it can come from. It's identified by the mayor's office. It's the mayor's prerogative. It's within what we, we talked about since the free cash by the Department of Revenues, and we're still trying to figure out how they did that without a vote by us. How the Department of Revenue used what free cash we had this year. But it's the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's there to be used. It takes a two-thirds vote this evening, and I encourage people to do it for the right reasons. We don't know if we're gonna be able to continue to meet. Let's face, face the real facts of what's going on out there. We have a moment here to take care of what is needed for our veterans. It's a moment where we can do it within what we've agreed to do, and I think it's something that we should pass this evening.
Counselor Bacon?
I support the transfer of this money, but I was hoping that perhaps our finance chair could let us know what will be remaining from the seven hundred and fifty thousand, should this expenditure be made.
So, I think Joe's coming back, Ryan, to answer.
Thank you. I did get a updated spreadsheet, and I'm sure Counselor Bartley has updated his. Unfortunately, it's, it's on my iPhone. I can't get into it right now. But there's a hundred thousand dollars for lights and the gas and electric, which the mayor's office is telling us they are very close to the, what Mike Sullivan pushed for in solidifying the deal to up the alue of taxes, which would include the, not, the need not to transfer that hundred thousand dollars from the seven hundred and fifty. I'm, I'm sorry, Counsel Bacon. It's a good question. I'll, I'll try and get into my email from Tanya, but I don't, there's a couple other items out there. But I want to say that the amount is in, in the area of two hundred thousand dollars, but I have to check that.
Okay, thanks. Maybe you could just drop us all an email tomorrow?
I, I actually, I would do it, but I'll actually ask the auditor to do it, so you'll get it from the bars.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Bartley, I see your hand's still up there. Is that, you still have a follow-up or no, or?
I'm only gonna answer the question that Counselor Bacon raised.
Okay.
And actually, I, I, it I think this is the third time I'm speaking, but
It's answering a question. I'll, I'll, we'll let you go.
Okay, so I, I have I, I have a slightly different amount than the auditor has, but I haven't compared my numbers to her, but it's just, they've only have one appropriation. I don't know why we're, we're, we're different. But the, if we pass this tonight to fifty-six thousand, the balance would be one eighty-four, two forty-six.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no others, I'll, I'll comment one thing on Counsel Bartley's. He, he is correct. There's nothing currently in the order. It's a request from stabilization, which we can use to fill this gap. There will be a reimbursement. That reimbursement will send it back to the general fund when it does come in, of which we, to have the request to have it put back into stabilization, which, one, the mayor can do that, once the appropriation comes in, or we can file an order asking that it be done, but it would be required that they sign off and we approve that. Any questions? If not, the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for number four, which is to give the fifty-six thousand to the veterans' benefits.
Todd, could you confirm that you can hear Sullivan?
Yeah, I can hear your mic.
We're hearing your mic.
Yep.
All right.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the taking of fifty-six thousand from stabilization to give to veteran benefits, which was item number four. It was approved with thirteen to zero, zero nays. That, that finishes item two and item four. Item three, unless you want to suspend the rules and go out of order, we still have two other guests here. Would you like to do that, Counsel McGivern, or?
Make a motion to receive item three and refer to committee. It's, it's for all, we have a copy of it. It's for all, our information.
So item three is to receive, refer to finance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So everyone voted for item three, which is from MMA Communication Regarding Budgeting During COVID, and that is going to our finance committee. Item five would be next, but you want to suspend the rules, Counsel McGivern?
Yes, if we could. We take up items five, six, and eight together.
Second that.
Please note that item seven is a duplicate of six. We don't need to do anything with it.
All right, so we're gonna suspend the rules, take up item five, six, and eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So item five is two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents from firefighters to injured on duty. Item six is four thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eight cents from firefighters, lieutenants to injured on duty. And item eight is eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and fourteen cents from patrolmen to injured on duty. With that, motion be received, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are the transfers from the salary line items, injured on duty line item for firefighters and police officers who have gone injured on duty. On item number five, it's one firefighter. And an item number eight, it's also one fire, I'm sorry, an item number six, it's also one fire, two firefighters. Item number eight is police officers. There are four police officers. This is for accounting purposes, so we can keep, keep track of our salaries being paid even when our, our first responders are on injured on duty for sometimes a very temporary period of time.
Any questions? Kind of standard, what we've been dealing with for a little while now. So there's no questions. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for five, six, and eight.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon? Bacon? Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve five, six, and eight, which would be to take from the line items and then give to the injured on duty, which is accounting procedure. It was approved by everybody. There was no nays. I, I make a motion to give seven.
Mr. President, if we could just refer it back to the auditor, that way we don't have to vote it up or down.
Okay, so item seven, refer back to the auditor. All those in favor? All those opposed? So item seven is a duplicate of item six, which is, then we're just going to send it back so they can fix their accounting to say that we didn't do it twice. All right, on to item number nine. It is in accordance with master law, the City Council hereby accept the provisions of the fiscal year 2020 Child Passenger Seat Distribution Car Seat Only Grant. Uh, motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a good discussion with our fire chief. He sends his best to everybody. I think our, our new chief is, uh, working tremendous under the worst of, uh, worst of conditions. Uh, this is a grant that is actually no exchange of money. It's just under five thousand dollars. The way it works, this is, I think, our, our sec, about our third year of participating in it. The way it works is the fire department takes requests for car seats, for cars that are, that are older cars that don't take the, uh, car seats the way they, the newer cars do, and for people who qualify for, for the car seats. Once they take the applications and they, they, they screen them, they send the application to the state and the, uh, car seat is, is made available for the individuals. Again, there is no exchange of money. There is no match by the city. The amount of money is of four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. That would be for approximately sixty-nine car seats, depending on the size and range that are requested.
Any questions by anybody? I don't see any hands. The motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the five-thousand-dollar child seat grant.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you voted thirteen to zero to approve the grant for five thousand dollars. Item number ten is in order, in law forty-four, section fifty-three A, that the city accept the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Emergency COVID-nineteen Funding. Counselor McGivern?
If I could, item ten and item number eleven are duplicates, so we could just take them off the table for discussion.
All right, so motions, take up ten, eleven as a package. One is going to go back for accounting purposes, but, uh, suspend the rules, take them up together. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So Counselor McGivern, I'll turn over to you as to where you want to go with this one.
Mr. President, I, I asked to take it off the table for discussion. I believe one of our guests, I think, here, if everybody received the information, this is about approximately twenty thousand dollars. This is an actual agreement that the mayor is asking to enter into with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who is a, a third party of money that comes through them that can be distributed to municipalities. There's a list of things that qualifies for it. Unfortunately, um, I was unable to get through to anyone to answer any other questions that we may have. So I'm not too sure if, uh, Mr. Bloomberg or someone else is here to talk about this.
Sean Gonsoffs from the Board of Health.
John is here, so Sean will turn over to you.
Hi, so, um, essentially, this money was distributed through the Department of Public Health. Um, and Pioneer Valley Planning is the designated recipient of the Department of Public Health grants. So all of the, uh, boards of health in Region One who applied for this funding, we, uh, the money went to Pioneer Valley Planning first, and then Pioneer Valley Planning, uh, distributed, uh, the money as requested to individual communities. The, um, application was submitted on March twenty, uh, I'm sorry, uh, March twentieth, and the signed documents went to Pioneer Valley Planning the twenty-fourth. Um, and we received a check that was submitted to the auditors on the twenty-seventh. The initial ask was for thirty thousand. Twenty thousand was, uh, approved and awarded. Um, that fund has already been set up by the auditor, uh, fund zero-eight-nine-three. No funds have been expended at this time. Uh, this money does not have to be paid back. It does have to be documented. It's emergency funding for contact tracing, for supplemental nurse help, um, for emergency actions such as wraparound housing for, um, people who are transient, who need to be quarantined and isolated, or first responders who might need to be quarantined. Um, there's a, a list that, uh, Counselor McGivern referenced of approved costs, um, but they are specific to COVID-nineteen emergency, uh, response efforts.
Hey, I know Counselor Lisi, you had your hand up, but it, it went bluer. Count, Ryan?
I'm good. I, uh, he answered my question in the, uh, talk that, uh, Sean gave, yeah.
Okay, a- anyone else? So motion, Counselor McGivern, you want a motion to pass the first reading?
Questions, I'll make a motion to pass the first reading.
I'll go with my hands up, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking on the side here, Counselor. Oh, there it is. Counselor Bartley.
Hold, hold, hold that stop for a second. Hold that. Wait, sorry, Mr. President. It's about four thousand degrees in my office. I had the door open. We just had the, uh, we just had a motorcycle rally, uh, go by. I mean, well, it's, it's not unusual, but, uh, but that was, that was loud, I have to say. I'm glad it didn't come through the mic, uh, the microphone. Uh, Sean, thank you for being here. Uh, I, I, um, I, I just want to state, um, on the record, I, I, I really have the utmost, utmost faith in, uh, the Board of Health and Sean's work. But I do have a couple of questions, Sean, uh, relative to this. Do you, do you have two minutes, Mr. President? Can I go ahead?
We have the floor.
Yeah, so as I said, I, I've worked with Sean quite, quite a bit in the, in the time he's been a, as an employee and now the director, and, uh, I, I've come away duly impressed. Uh, but Sean, as, as we travel through, through the city and as I speak with, uh, uh, police, um, the transient population that you referenced, um, for, for example, uh, nee, nee, under, underneath the, uh, uh, the, the Mueller Bridge by the, uh, by the Rotary, I understand there's transient population in Springdale on the, uh, Connecticut Riverside, the Dyke. I am continuing, continuing to see, uh, panhandlers throughout the city. No stoppage whatsoever in that business, Sean. No, none. Three ninety-one, Kmart Plaza, Route ninety-one, Hampden Street, I could go on. And nothing being done. I got, I've got to know the Board of Health's position on this. What can be done about this? How are you effectuating this, which we have ordinances on the book, books, to, to prevent this? If there was ever a time, in my opinion, to sort of curtail this activity in a, in a, in an, in an upfront way, now would be the time.
We do not enforce panhandling. Uh, from what I have discussed with the Law Department and read elsewhere, that panhandling is a protected First Amendment right, and that we do not have the effort to stop that or to cease it. I believe we've had meetings about this in the past. I've spoken to the police about it. There is no city effort to, as long as someone is not being aggressive. I don't know that there is any effort to dissuade people from doing so. I, I've been told that that's, it's not legal to ban that or to stop people from, from doing so.
But we have ordinances on the book, Sean. Now, I, I'm not saying that, that it's, I, I just want you to consider it. That's, that's all. Because it, this, this, these are kind of extraordinary circumstances. I, I understand there is, that there is a First Amendment right, uh, to panhandle. I, I also understand that you don't, you, you rarely see this in, in other municipalities. Ludlow comes right to mind. Westfield comes right to mind. I, I cannot believe that they do not have a similar transient population. Maybe not as, uh, not as extreme as other municipalities, but they have it. So I'm, I'm curious as to, as to why, I mean, if, if somebody's going to roll down their window and, and give, well within six feet, for sure. I, I mean, from a Board of Health perspective, I, I would suggest that you might want to, you might want to consider speaking with Chief Feebo, speaking with the Law Department again in these, in these extraordinary circumstances. That's all.
Do we know? Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor President, and I'm McGee. Um, I kind of actually just want to piggyback on what Counselor Bartley had said. I received a phone call, and this, um, this reference, uh, a, a call or email, um, other counselors as well. So you guys might be, um, uh, familiar with who I'm talking about. But nonetheless, uh, this person is just referencing one area. It's the fire station in front of, um, I'm sorry, it's the, the island in front of the fire station, where this person is, uh, is aggressive and is not standing on, um, sidewalk, uh, or a medium. It's actually sta, this person is standing in the middle of the road. Now, as you all know, I've, I've spoken very passionately about panhandling before, and people have significant issues. However, there is, uh, this person's coming up within six feet of people's windows. If a person has a window rolled down, okay, the situation where this, this, uh, lady had children in the car and the person came up to the window, um, and she was concerned about, you know, this whole six-foot, uh, issue, and the person came up to the window, so she called me. And, um, I said, we're having a city council meeting, and I want to discuss this. Um, so Sean, can you discuss that aspect of it? I know that you don't patrol that. That's the police department, but.
Well, I guess my, my primary advice would be not to roll down the window and interact with anybody. And then the secondary advice would be if someone is aggressive, regardless of what their base purpose is, panhandling or otherwise, that's a police matter. I mean, that's harassment. If somebody is being aggressive or is entering somebody's space unwanted, I, I think there doesn't need to be a panhandling aspect involved there. That, that seems like a police matter on its own.
All right, so let me just get you this straight. So their rights of standing there, they have more rights than a person that on a nice day like today cannot drive and stop at a red light, and they have to roll up their windows now?
I don't know that I can stop someone from standing in a public space. Um, I mean, if we're going to stop people from standing in a public space, we would have to do it with everybody. I, I, I don't know how I can individually tell someone you're not allowed to be here.
It's not a public space. It's the middle of the road. I would say, I would, I, I guess I would understand because years ago, when Counselor McGee and I were at high school, we used to hang around in front of friendlies, and we'd get shoved off pretty quickly. Uh, that was a, a public sidewalk, but this is.
By the Board of Health?
Well. By a lot of people.
So we're unarmed inspectors, and I don't know that, uh, telling people to go away or dealing with possibly mentally ill or disturb people is something that the Board of Health would be handling. I, I mean, that, that sounds like a police matter. I hate to dump this in the police lap, but that, that's not, that's not what our inspectors do.
No, no, I agree with you. I'll follow.
All right, so.
Thank you.
So, so with that, we have Counselor Bacon, then Counselor Tomlin, then Counselor Anderson Burgos. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take back, really, in this portion of the discussion to review everybody about the six-foot distancing. And that even though there's word on the news that we're getting to the peak in some of the worst areas, this isn't the time to become casual. And I, I think whether you're on a corner, you're in your car, or you're walking out at the reservoir, I'm hearing more and more people outside are ignoring the six-foot distancing. And to become casual about it at this point is really premature, highly contagious. So I would say to everybody to take whatever steps you need to, to protect yourself. And I think if part of that is keeping your window up on a corner when you think somebody might aggressively approach your car is unfortunately, um, this month and maybe next month, the thing to do. But I think that's just the big message I want to bring out. I think people, because the Holyoke numbers on the news may be under the impression that we don't have any of these cases, but we do. We have well over a hundred people in Holyoke that have tested positive. So it is here, just like it is everywhere else. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, great point, Linda. I, I believe the same thing. Uh, I, I, I hear about, uh, the cases, uh, almost daily. Two of my daughters are nurses, and they're dealing with, on the front lines, uh, every day. Um, and there's going to be vagrants. There's going to be people on the street corners, no matter what. Uh, unfortunately, you know, there's people that have substance abuse issues. There's people that have mental health issues. Um, my advice and what I usually do is I try to just keep on driving by and try not to, uh, roll my window down, try not to talk to them at all, especially during these times when, uh, you know, people, uh, any one of us right now could have the virus and not even know it. Um, that we have to be cautious and, and, and be cognizant of that fact. But, uh, to bring up the point, uh, we're talking about a, a twenty-thousand-dollar, uh, a grant here. I, I think, uh, the important thing is to, to accept this grant and, and try not to sidetrack the issue in looking at, uh, what's happening on the street corner. We've been dealing with, with this issue probably for the last four or five years. And, uh, I, I know it's an important issue, and it's affecting a lot of people, but, um, I think we should just try to just stay away and, and try to, you know, maybe say a prayer for these people that are on the street. I mean, they need help. Um, I know we try to get help with, uh, different agencies, um, and some people just, I talked to some people a year or two ago that just don't want the help. They don't want to be in a structured environment. Uh, they want to live out, you know, by the river. They want to live out be, behind, uh, Kmart or by Ocean State. Um, but I, I, I think, uh, to, to bring this up at, at this point, uh, this issue, um, while we're trying to discuss a grant that's coming into the Pioneer Valley, I think that maybe we should save for another day and just try to accept this grant.
Counselor, wait, oh, Counselor Anderson Burgos has the floor.
So I agree with, um, Peter, and so I'll make this quick. I believe I've mentioned this before. The meeting is not a public way. You can walk by it, but you can't just sit there. I mean, it's like me standing in the middle of a highway. You can't. That's, that's for traffic. That's for vehicles, not meant for a person to stand there. So that is, within itself, is dangerous. Maybe we need to craft an order which states that you cannot hang out at the median. That's dangerous, whichever way you want to look at it. That's just dangerous. And just like Peter said, let's move on.
Uh, last is Counselor LeBron Martinez. Gladys DeBulioja, are you there?
Mr. President?
Can you, can you?
Yeah, I can hear you, Gladys.
Okay. No, I'm, this is, I think this is a just, a, a great subject. Uh, it is something that is actually, uh, not only because of the panhandlers, but a lot of the constituents and people asking me questions regarding, you know, what, what we doing, and I think this funding's come at a great timing, like, for, I'd like to hear from Sean if this is okay or this has to be a crafted order for that question. What are we really doing, like, for homeless people, um, possibly those who may be by the river? Is there any, any efforts through Tapestry, any other organizations trying to check out what's happening with this particular population that, you know, are part of mental, um, you know, um, I'm sorry, pan, panhandlers that have sub, substance abuse, mental health issues? Who knows if half of them could be dying by the river, and we don't even know. I'm just curious. Anything?
So, uh, we're actually regularly meeting with Tapestry, obviously remotely, but, um, we have been speaking with them on a, uh, conference call and, you know, electronically. Uh, part of the housing, um, the mayor, there was an art, a news article, and I think the mayor has spoken about it. We've split into some concentrated groups to focus on issues that are affecting the community at this time as part of the coronavirus. I'm involved in the housing pod, and Tapestry has, um, frequently communicated their needs. We have formulated a variety of possible solutions, and we're looking on implementation. But those communities of, um, people who are either homeless or transient, um, the guidance right now is not to disturb or break up those communities, because at least for now, they're accessible, and you know where people are staying. There's been plenty of outreach. There's been communication of best, I don't want to call it best practices, but information. but information, um, to the transient community. We're still trying to get meals out there, to get people in touch with services. A regional shelter has opened, um, that's not in the city for, uh, people who are homeless and are positive for coronavirus. At this time, we haven't had to, um, have anybody transported there, but that resource is available. And so we're not just meeting with, um, only Tapestry, but also, uh, Valley Opportunity Council, Holyoke Housing Authority, a variety of, um, agencies outside of the city and we're discussing, uh, the needs and, um, you know, we're hearing people who are either the public who are concerned or people who are part of this community that are affected. So, uh, there is discussion and, um, there is some planning in place and research about what needs to be addressed. And, um, I know that's ongoing in the other, um, concentrated, uh, pods that have been formed to deal with this issue.
Councillor Green, Councillor Greenie had a question. Hold on, Councillor Greenie, hold on one second. Councillor Born had a follow-up before you go. Councillor Martinez?
Yeah, Sean, Sean, do we have this like, um, resources listed up in our website? Like what is available for someone like that if we encounter and hear from the residents saying that they know of somebody who may be in this situation, who could be even, who knows, infected or at risk of being?
Not on the Board of, not on the Board of Health? Are, are you asking about resources?
City, city, if the city website, and if we have any resources like that.
Uh, but my question is, are you asking about resources for if you are sick with coronavirus or resources if you are transient or homeless?
Yeah, transient and homeless.
So yes, those, there is information that is available on the city website about that. Separately, on the Board of Health website, there is also information about what to do if you are sick or you have symptoms and who to call. So I, they're not the same document, but they're both available.
Okay, thank you. Good enough.
All right, Councillor Greenie.
Yes, Mr. President, these are very important issues and, and very compassionate issues that we're discussing tonight. But we're here to accept the grant and I'd like to move this question so that we can get on record as approving this grant. And maybe at a future meeting, we could discuss all these issues that are coming up now.
The councillor has asked that we move the question. Everyone has spoken, there's other people that have a second question, but with the councillor asking to move the question, is there a second to that?
Second.
So it is seconded, the motion on the floor would be to take up agenda item 10 and 11 is just a duplicate.
Mr. President?
And pass the first reading. Who's, who's, who's that?
Oh, it's Joe.
Councillor here.
Uh, just to clar- just to clarify, what we have in front of us is the signed contract by the mayor and the representatives of the Pioneer, Pioneer Valley Funding Authority. We're giving the mayor, the city, through Sean Department, permission to spend this $20,000. So we just, I think we just, we can do the first reading, but we're actually voting on the contract itself.
So a motion would just to be received, adopting, well, it's actually saying that you authorized the establishment of the fund, so we'll do it two readings. So a motion would be passed the first reading, all those in favor? All those opposed?
That's the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the $20,000 for COVID.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley? Green?
Yeah.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Aborn Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
We hear vote, you voted 13-0 to, uh, accept the Pioneer Valley Commission Regency Fund. That takes us to 12, uh, which is an order from Councillor McGirtner that master law, chapter 44, section 53A, the city council hereby accept the COVID-19 Community Development Block Grant Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Will should be received, adopt, pass the first reading, Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Typically, we refer this to, we are, it appears to be an addition, an extension of our, uh, I believe Alicia's with us this evening, addition and extension of our block grant funds for this, uh, for these times in dealing with the COVID virus. The amount, if I read it correctly, is $744,625. But I would suspend the rules if Councillor Bartley wants to say something and also suspend the rules to allow Alicia to walk us through this.
So a motion is, uh, to allow Alicia to give us the information. Well, we did do that, but we'll do again, motion is to suspend rules, allow Alicia to speak. All those in favor? All those? Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I think if we had, uh, if we rolled back the clock 60 days, no one would ever, in a million years, guess we would be here like this tonight. So, um, it's nice to be with all of you. Uh, so you have probably been following the progress of the CARES Stimulus Act, uh, through Congress. And these, uh, funds, the CDVG COVID-19 funds, um, were announced last week. HUD's website has, uh, posted that the City of Holyoke will receive $744,625. We are, and that is in addition to this year's, uh, entitlement as well as in addition to the FY20 entitlement. And it is to, uh, be used to address COVID-19 related issues in the city. We are awaiting additional guidance from HUD, very similar to the economic development money that was rolled out, um, and announced and banks were left, uh, sort of wondering how they were gonna do it. We're, we're in the same boat. We're waiting for some additional guidance about how to properly administer these funds. But we knew that you were meeting tonight and we wanted to make sure that once we do get that guidance, um, and we have a plan in place that we're ready to go.
Questions for for Alicia, anyone? I'm looking at the, I'm Councillor McGivern, I saw you pop up.
Sullivan does.
Uh, well, go, all right, Councillor Sullivan, because we don't have your, you're on the side here, I know you're on the phone, so Councillor Sullivan.
Yeah, uh, Alicia, um, the Paper City Basketball and one other group volunteered to give up their funds. Um, does, does that mean that it will no longer be necessary for them to do that now that we've got this other money coming in?
So, uh, that was the, that was the funding that was reallocated two weeks ago to respond to the immediate needs. And at this point, um, I don't have a mechanism to just go ahead and drop the money in, but we certainly can, uh, figure out how to make them whole, um, as we move through this process. But right now, tonight, I don't have the ability to do that. Um, but once, once we get going with this process, we can take a look. Um, they were very, we had put out the call to all of our agencies who hadn't expended any funds, um, to see if there was anybody who thought they could forfeit their grant because we had an urgent need when this all, uh, started, uh, for additional food funds and shelter funds. Um, and Paper City and, um, Paper City forfeited, um, forfeited their grant. They hadn't, they hadn't used it and they also weren't sure that they were gonna be able to use it because their grant was due to expire on June 30th and could not be extended.
Yeah, I understand that. They were in the process and, uh, they, they slammed the brakes on, uh, because they thought they were doing something to help out the city. So, and, and as I understand it, out of all the participants in the program, only two volunteered.
Uh, that's, that's the case. Um, I will say that for the majority of our public service agencies, they had already drawn down their CDVG dollars for this year. So there weren't, there weren't many agencies who had money left over.
Okay, that's my only question.
All right, Councillor Aborn Martinez, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, Alicia, uh, my question is, so this is actually additional dollars to support? Or this is the official numbers you already, you would have gotten for CDVG that we've gone through already, like, planning?
Correct.
So it is additional?
So the funding, I'm sorry, there's a bit of a delay. Um, so the allocation in the spreadsheet that you worked on, uh, a few weeks ago and that we were waiting, um, for the mayor to make his final allocations on in May, that spreadsheet still stands. Um, once this money, uh, comes to the city and we have an idea of how we're gonna, um, allocate it and then to also work with those three pillars that Sean described to figure out needs, then we'll have a good idea for moving forward. But this is in addition to, um, in addition to, this is a new block of money. And, and it can only, this funding, um, follows the CDVG program, so it is to benefit low and moderate income residents, low and moderate income neighborhoods, um, and to specifically address issues related to COVID-19.
Councillor Tomlin.
Yeah, thanks, Alicia, for, uh, explaining that to us. I, I'm just curious, with, with this extra money coming in, I know we've been reading a lot and hearing a lot about, uh, the needs of, uh, food banks and housing, uh, agencies. Will this, um, money come in, will you get back to us? Uh, will it be a vote by the, the committee, will be sent to committee? Or, or do people just make applications for this that are, are in need? Uh, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure, that's, that's one of the key questions that we're waiting to hear from, uh, with HUD. We know that, uh, as part of the stimulus package, Congress passed what they called the mega waiver. And for a number of federal programs, they listed some waivers to the regulations. Um, for instance, one of the waivers that they did issue was to take us, the typical 30-day comment period and drop that down to five days. Uh, but in terms of the other compliance items, we're waiting, we're waiting for additional feedback. At this point, I can tell you, I know that any expenditures of the 744, any proposals would be subject to a five-day public comment period. We would attempt to do a Zoom virtual hearing, um, but beyond that, I'm still, still waiting for guidance.
Okay, I appreciate that because I noticed, as we all know, that there's agencies that, and, and that are really in need right now. And I know the longer th- this takes, uh, just like anything that from the, from the government, some things could take a month or two. I think it's important that as soon as you find out, we get the, the, the gray spirit of the five-day public comment and try to set it up for the, the, the soonest meeting we can to try to get these monies into the hands of, uh, people that are in need, in need. Thank you.
Councillor, oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
If, if I could just follow up, I just, I wanted you to all know that, um, so you know Jen, Jennifer and Zaida from my office, the three of us, um, when it was clear that City Hall was closing, um, the three of us packed the office and are all working remotely from our homes. Um, the IT department was able to get us laptops and access to our, remote access to our digital desktops. So we are working full-time on these, um, projects through the weekend, trying to, um, you know, trying to get programs realigned and, and to meet the needs of the community. So we, we have the capacity to do it and, uh, as soon as we can hit the streets with the funds, we will.
Super.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councillor Bartley is next. Is he unmuted? Did, yeah, unmute him, unmute him, Ryan?
He's muted. There he is.
All right, there you go. Councillor Bartley?
I appreciate, uh, the department as saying that. To my knowledge, I, I don't think anyone's been laid off, so I, I, I assume everyone's working remotely from home, um, but that's, that's good news to emphasize that. I just want to thank, uh, Councillor Sullivan for mentioning, uh, Paper City Basketball. We, we had a pretty frank discussion in committee about that. We didn't, we talked about it much at full city council because we, we went over for in-depth it about Paper City Basketball and the plight they're in. And we were given representation at the time that, that that would, um, not be a problem, that they would, they'd be able to expend their funds before June 30th. And now we have an organization in, in need of, uh, uh, of funds that, that was, that willingly volunteered to, uh, to give up their funds. I, 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 I for one did not know that. I didn't, I, I didn't see that any, in any press release, um, from the mayor's office. The only press release I saw from the mayor's office, uh, was relative to supporting, um, um, Women's Shelter Campañeros and Western Mass Elder Care. And, and I, I didn't see anything about, uh, an agency, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad, I'm, I'm very glad that that was brought up. I, I, I really hope that, I, I really hope, now, this is $744,000, which, which by the way, nobody's so far has said, "Thank you to Congressman Neal for, for, for shepherding that into the CARES Act." But in fact, he did shepherd it in the CARES Act. And consequently, a- all these communities in Western Mass and beyond are, are being funded with, I would, I mean, with the finance chairman, my friend Joe McGivern has said, for, since I got on the board, it's, there's probably the best thing that ever came out of the federal government, uh, ever. And, uh, and, and now, and now we've got, what we, what we had this year, Alicia, a little over a million dollars and now we've got another $744,000, which I, I'm really hopeful we'll, we'll spend, um, appropriately. So I mean, I, I think we saw on the paper, the City of Springfield got behind this, the City Council got behind this last night. I mean, I think we all have to get behind this tonight. I mean, we're in such dire straits and, and I'm confident that with Alicia's guidance and, uh, and, and Zaida and Jennifer and et cetera, that we will appropriately, uh, fund this. I am interested and fund the agencies that really need to get the, uh, get the funds to the, uh, uh, they, they get the funds to the people that, that, that need the, need the support. And that was why, Mr. President, I just want to, just one, one last comment. Uh, I, I wasn't making a, a political stance, uh, although I have in the past, uh, relative to, to the panhandling population and, and I get frustrated when I say things and they, they get mischaracterized. I, I don't think it's intentional, but i- it was frankly about the healthcare. That was it. So I know we want to move the question to $20,000. I know we want to do that. But I want to get some kind of clear guidance from the Board of Health, that, that the $20,000 is gonna help the most, most effective, affected part of the population, which I think are the transients in Holyoke. I mean, I didn't hear anything, any specific comment, even though in that agenda, it, it lays out pretty clearly that the transient population can be assisted. So it's my hope that, that the department head has given some thought to this a- and, and really, whether, you know, whatever it is, I don't want to numerate anything, but, but there, there's gotta be a way to do that to protect not just the public, but of course to protect them. And I think that's what, I, I, I just think that's vital.
No, you're, 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 you're fine. And no one said you're out of order or anything else. It, when a motion is made, that's what we do. We, we follow the rules. And you were, I, I didn't stop you when you were talking on it because the Pioneer Valley Grant, as it, as it states in its thing, is that the city can use the funds to cover expenditures already incurred in response to COVID-19. Anticipated expense can be for surveillance and cease, uh, surveillance and case identification, monitoring of travelers, data management, isolation and quarantine, which would include, but not limited to, housing, security, environmental control, cleanup, so on. So you were on point, Councillor, but people had already spoken. When a point, word of approval is done, then that's what was done.
Meeting, you're always fair. I'm not worried about it. I just want, just to make the point. That's it. Thank you.
So now it's Councillor Lisi.
Hi, um, Alicia, thanks for being here this evening. Uh, my question is, it's pretty simple. Um, so it seems that the, um, CARES Act is going to allow CDVG funds to be distributed to different organizations. Um, want to know if they, if the, uh, uh, organizations would need to apply for funds to address problems that have already resulted COVID-19 or if they can, um, I guess, uh, proactively apply for these funds and, um, attempt to mitigate spread or, um, you know, bolster containment, things, things like that. Uh, what's the nature, i- if any, of, of the, the funding that they can apply for?
So in terms of eligibility, um, for the use of the funding, the eligibility is going to follow the CDVG regulations. So things like healthcare access, um, housing assistance, uh, food servicing, all of those sorts of items, um, are certainly eligible activities. In terms of dealing with the aftermath, I would anticipate seeing an economic development package as part of this to ensure that we're getting folks back to work as quickly as possible. And that could include, it could include, um, a- additional grants to small businesses. It could include special job training programs. I would envision perhaps partnerships with healthcare agencies to get people trained and up and, up and rolling. Um, so I think it's both. The quicker we get the money on the streets, obviously, the quicker it will be used to address things that we're seeing now. Um, the longer it takes, I think the more, the longer it takes for the funding to get here, um, and to, to get the funding rolling, I think it'll start dealing with some of the aftermath. Um, so it could be that it's, it, it will be a split. So we're really, um, working with the pillars, those three pillars that Sean described, housing, economic development and, um, shelter, uh, housing and shelter, economic development. And then the third one is food access and social services. And so we're in close contact with all three of those groups and those are the eyes and ears on the street. And so I think they will, uh, assist us in guiding the process. It certainly has to be an open, transparent and fair process, the way the CDVG process always goes. Um, but I would anticipate both, both, uh, addressing what's happening right now and then the Um, but I would anticipate both, both, uh, addressing what's happening right now and then the aftermath. I mean, obviously, a primary concern is folks losing their housing, rental assistance, mortgage payments, utilities, all of that. Um, that is an area that Holyoke fortunately to date has not worked in, and so we're looking to HUD for a lot of guidance about providing that sort of emergency assistance.
Mr. President?
Hold on, Counselor McGivern is next in the queue, then Counselor Graney.
Oh, I defer to Counselor Gray.
Well, Counselor Graney, you're up.
Yeah, just a question to Alicia. Thank you for doing what you do. Can some of this money, uh, be used for the transient and the homeless population that we have in the city?
So I would say absolutely. Uh, that's one of HUD's, uh, areas of emphasis. Um, I will say that in terms of the folks that are panhandling, I, um, I would be confident in saying that ninety percent of them have had some sort of outreach by professional staff already. Um, it may be a case, I know that we had a panhandler down on Main Street at three ninety-one, we finally got him into, um, an assisted living unit. And so there are housing units available, there are people working the streets, making contact with everyone. Um, but sometimes folks, a lot of times, folks just refuse, um, the services. And so if they're refusing services, uh, refusing housing, refusing social worker, refusing entitlements, um, in a lot of cases, our hands are tied. Now, I'm not talking about the, the legal aspect or the policing aspect. I'm talking about in terms of how we're treating human beings on the streets. And, and those folks have had, um, have had social workers, have had assessments, that sort of thing. But absolutely, CDBG is intended for use of low income individuals, and, and homeless is right up there.
Thank you.
Counselor McGivern, did you, do you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I raised my hand after I thought everybody was done speaking. Um, thank you, Alicia, for the update. As always, right on target. And thank you for continuing to work from home is, uh, certainly admirable. And I agree with Counselor Bartley, and, and I've said it many times, block grant monies are so important to the urban centers of, of this country. And then I've also been critical of the lack of some block grant monies over recent years. But the fact that the federal government has sent these funds to us so quickly, I think it's important that we recognize that. Our actual responsibility this evening is to adopt the resolution that allows the city to accept the, the amount of money that was, uh, is in front of us. Resolution is written just like the resolution we adopt each year to receive block grant monies. And it clearly states, just like the monies that we received earlier this year, the mayor has the final authority over these dollars. I, I suggest that we adopt the resolution this evening, accept the monies, and allow them to get through the proper channel so they can be put to quick use for so many dire needs that are out there.
Uh, Counselor Bron Martinez, you have your hand up, or?
Yeah, I got a last question. In regards to that money, Alicia, what, if we don't get to use it all, because everything was Zoom, let's say, I don't know, in couple of months, do we have to return that money, or once it's given to us, it's ours?
Uh, so we have not been told that if you don't spend it, you lose it. Um, that hasn't been the case, uh, with CDBG funds traditionally. Um, I anticipate that we will be able to come up with seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of needs. I really do. Um, because even if things abate and we all go back to work and life starts to be normal, for a lot of the residents of the city, it's going to take a while to get back on their feet. And this is another opportunity to grow our economic development base, um, and assist people with housing and all of the needs, all the needs that we have. So there's always going to be a level of need in the city. And frankly, uh, based on what I'm seeing coming out of the National Advocacy Group today, I would anticipate additional money over and above this. Coming to the city.
I, I can see it being spent.
So, oh, yeah, yeah. No doubt, no doubt.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Counselor Tomlin has a question?
Yeah, just, uh, just to stay, I just want to, uh, second, uh, Counselor McGivern's, uh, motion, Mr. President.
Right, Counselor Leahy, do you have a follow-up before I move on to the motion, or?
Follow-up?
Do you have a, a, a question, or?
Uh, no, I haven't talked yet, but I, I would like, um, just, uh, Alicia, we go way back, uh, back when you were in the Conservation Commission, and I thought you were the best Conservation Commissioner. And when you moved from that position, I was so bummed out, but I'm so happy that you're in this position. Um, I, I think you just do a fantastic job, and I just want to give, um, some kudos where kudos is deserved. You do a fantastic job, and so I just, so excited hearing this. I cannot believe how fast this happened. How did this happen so fast?
Um, I don't know. You know, I don't know. It's, it's amazing to me how fast we're moving. Um, it's almost a little scary. Uh, but I think to see both the House and the Senate work together to get this passed and the President to push it, um, is a good sign. So, I mean, I, I, I've never seen a situation where dollars have come before the rules. Like, we're still waiting for the rules and how to do it, so. But thank you. Thank you for the comments.
And I look forward to seeing you in real life soon.
Yeah.
Counselor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this question is for Alicia. Um, first of all, I want to thank you very much, um, for all the work that, um, you do for our city. And, um, uh, my question specifically was, um, for the small business loans, is that process, because I have a lot of questions from constituents, is that process going to take place through the CDBG office?
So, um, you probably know that we had a micro enterprise program that was offering grants to micro enterprise, uh, businesses, which are five or fewer employees owned by a low income, um, household. And so we are in the process and putting the finishing touches on it, on pivoting that program to expand it from just micro enterprise to, uh, all small businesses with a whole list of criteria. Um, because we know that we have small businesses that wouldn't have qualified it for our micro enterprise program as it was. So we are getting ready to roll out that program. I would expect to roll that out in the next few days. Um, and that is going to expand access to immediate funding, um, for small business. So the grants will be a minimum of a, a thousand dollars. We have a pool right now to hit the streets of ninety thousand, and then once this seven forty-four comes in, I would expect that we would, um, add additional funds to the, to the ninety thousand. So now that the Chamber of Commerce has been stabilized with the new director, um, we're back in partnership with them, which is great, because they have the business capacity to help us run the program. So it's going to be a partnership between the Officer Community Development and the Chamber of Commerce, and then we'll receive support from, um, the Office of Plenty Economic Development and Marcos and his crew. So we'll be, we'll be hitting the streets shortly with that. Um, and the key with that program will be, will be supporting, uh, the retention of jobs for low and moderate income residents. We'll be supporting micro enterprises, and we'll also be supporting those key neighborhood businesses that are serving our low and moderate income neighborhoods. Thank you so much. So, and once we have that, I'm, I'm happy to send you all the email, um, with the applications and, and the background information and that sort of thing, so you can help us get the word out.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
Alright, so if there's no further discussion, the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll if you vote yes. You're voting for, uh, this, this funding.
Anderson Bergos?
Yes.
Bart Listy?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you've approved thirteen to zero, uh, the item twelve, which was the, uh, block grant money. Uh, item thirteen is an order from Counselor Leahy to repair the potholes on Dartmouth Street near Pleasant Street to fill them in.
Uh, yeah, hi, um, thank you. Received, uh, adopted, sent to the Department of Public Works.
Can I add my name, please?
Absolutely, of course.
So Annie McGee, uh, motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW when they, when they get their time. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so everyone voted for it. Item fourteen. What was it?
I pull up Terry Murphy.
Well, yeah, you, go ahead, Counselor, go ahead.
I'll speak a great length about this. Uh, no, um, so at the, at the bottom of, uh, Dartmouth Street, where it kind of beats up with Pleasant Street, uh, there is potholes that are probably about six to eight inches, and it's already affected a few different cars. And so I think we're going to be seeing that, um, and if crystal still around, I'm sure we're going to be seeing some, um, tires that have exploded, rims, and it's causing, it's going to cause more money than it's worth. So I'd like to get this fixed sooner than later.
Okay, well, we'll send it off to them as soon as possible. Um, item fourteen is from Counselor Leahy as well, order that, uh, Lennox Street be repaved.
Yeah, once again, uh, receive, adopt, and send to the Department of Public Works.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to, uh, DPW. Any comment, Counselor?
Yeah, under the Murphy rule, I would like to say that, uh, at the end of, uh, Lennox Street, um, there's some new, uh, homeowners down there. And if you drive down there, I'm not sure exactly when the last time it was paved. It's in really, really poor condition. And once again, uh, vehicles are going to get ruined, and it's going to cost us money in the long run.
So motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, that was thirteen to zero. Uh, fifteen is from Counselor Leahy, order that the Water Department remove the blue spray paint on the telephone pole in front of Twenty Lake Street. The pole is number three.
Uh, received, adopt, and send to the Water Department.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to the Water Department. Under discussion, or?
Yeah, just under discussion. Um, the Water Department, they go out and they do their measurement and whatnot, and they usually, uh, put spray paint on, uh, you know, the blacktop and also the curbs. In this case, they, they put it on, um, a telephone pole. This telephone pole is in, um, it's an eye view of Counselor Sullivan's house, and I don't call it, uh, Counselor Sullivan does not want to see this every day. But it looks like graffiti, so just trying to help my, uh, my neighbor out. I'm trying to get this removed.
Right, so all those in favor? All those in favor, all those opposed?
Aye.
Alright, so Isaiah was thirteen to zero, we'll call it. Sixteen is from Counselor Leahy, order that the Board of Health give the City Council weekly briefings or emails on the coronavirus.
Yeah, I'd actually like to, if I could amend this, if I can, um, getting, uh, daily, uh, briefings, which are extremely, extremely good, these, these briefings that we're getting every day are great briefings. But, uh, if I could admit it, instead of putting, um, uh, the Board of Health, if I could maybe have like a weekly caller with the mayor, um, I'm not sure if any of you guys have, uh, had any conversation with the mayor. I go onto his Facebook Live, um, posts as much as I can, but, uh, you know, I'd like to hear from the mayor, uh, exactly what's happening and what we're doing and that sort of thing. Uh, I know other communities are, um, their city councils are talking to the mayor probably at least once a month, or one, once a week, rather.
I know Ryan was getting on to the, uh, city, to give you a heads up, that he was joining every Friday, it was around three thirty. There was department heads joining with the mayor's office to get updates as to what's going on. We can ask Mike to, uh, send that link over to you as well, but Ryan was getting that information. No, I, I knew about it. He was, and any information that was coming out of the mayor's office was in, being forwarded to Ryan to send over to you guys. So you were getting it through email, you were just on the conference call, Ryan was representing us on the conference call.
I've been getting emails.
Yep. Uh, Mike, Mike has a follow-up, if you want. Uh, Mike Bloomberg?
Yeah, I would just say that, um, uh, we do, we do our best to get everything that's going out through, throughout the day in, in that a- daily email. But, uh, we have, um, been, been doing two things. One is, uh, for, for some large scale decisions, I know we've been emailing you all directly. Um, but, uh, for, for the big picture, uh, we do have a, a weekly department head call on Friday for, for updates, and it, it ends with Q and A. Uh, if, if that's your preference, I'd be happy to do that. If, if the council decides that the, the council would like a council specific call, um, I'd be happy to arrange that as well, uh, with the mayor and the emergency operations team. So, uh, I would leave it up to you as to, to how you all, uh, want to do that.
No, I'll put it in the hands of, uh, Counselor McGee. He's the president, but, um, you know, I, you know, we're one team here, uh, you know, we're the council. There's the mayor, we work hand in hand. Um, you know, we should all be on the same page. Um, that's my thought.
Well, we can have it, if they're going to do the Fridays still, the Fri- Friday at three thirty, we can get you the call-in link, if that's how you say it best. And then that way, everyone can call in if you are able to make it on Friday at three thirty.
Sounds good.
Does that work? Okay. So amended to order that the mayor's office give the City Council the weekly briefings, uh, call-in number on the coronavirus, of which Ryan can forward that over to. He does get it. He's the one that's representing us and on the call, so he'll get it to everybody. So that would be the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so then motion is receive, adopt, send to, uh, our administrative assistant, Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Last is number seventeen from Counselor McGee, Counselor McGivern, order that the City Council support the request for resolution to Governor Baker with regards to the Hoyoke Mall, similar to that of New York, see attached. Everyone should have got the attachments.
Make a motion to receive and re- have the President refer a letter to the Governor.
Second.
Motion is to receive. You, everyone get a copy of this letter? Anyone not get a copy of this letter?
The letter?
I got it.
So it's a letter that, i- in essence, the mall reached out to Counselor McGivern, they sent it over to me, uh, is similar to that, which Counsel, uh, not Counselor, but State Rep Vega, as well as the mayor's office, signed off on and sent to the governor, asking to adopt similar, uh, resolutions or orders like New York did, which is a forbearance on loans, specifically the mall, anyone who has a loan or attached to the mall, uh, we're asking for assistance for the mall with, with the forbearance, kind of similar to what New York put in place. Of which, within that, uh, letter, it will specify the total number of businesses, uh, total number of employees, which I do believe was three thousand four hundred and forty-five employees at the Hoyoke Mall. So in essence, we're trying to give any assistance possible. This letter asks the governor to give that assistance to the mall, or any, any mall, really. Any questions? Now, so the motion is to receive, adopt, have the letter signed and sent off to the governor.
Mr. President?
By everyone, yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's Counselor, Counselor Bartley, I'm sorry, I missed your hand.
Just practically speaking, who's, are, are we, are, who's writing the letter, and when will this happen?
We have the letter, it was sent with an email, I can resend it.
Well, I saw a letter from the town of Kingston.
It's at the.
I saw it, it was, town of Kingston, I didn't see one on the city Hoyoke letterhead. Did, did you?
No, 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 in essence, that's the sample of which we'll put it on the city letterhead from, uh, our city administrator. We'll have all signatures put on it and then sent off.
O- o- okay, so I, I, I just want to, just so, it's going to be, it's going to come from the City Council?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
That's what they're asking for. That's what, that's what the request was when I came into Counselor McGivern.
But no, I, I, I think, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. Initially, I wasn't super keen on it, but I did speak with Bill Rogalski today, and, uh, I understand his, his point, and, uh, and I, I said we would, we would get behind it. I, I, I don't know if, uh, if the mayor's office has weighed in, if the mayor's office has heard from, uh, Mr. Rogalski or anybody else, if they want to weigh in on this, and if they want to, does, does the mayor's office want to support this? Just through the chair to Mr. Bloomberg?
I got to double check this letter. Well, I've received two letters and notifications from the mall. Um, if this is the one in regards to, uh, uh, relief on, on mortgage forbearance, and then, then that would be the one that we would, uh, uh, we would support, and, and it specifically does not say malls or Hoyoke Mall, use the Hoyoke Mall as an example.
Correct.
It, it discusses, I believe, all, all commercial, uh, mortgage and real estate holders, uh, which is something that the, um, uh, the mayor supports and recognizes the re- need right now, not just for large business and commercial real estate holders, but, uh, small business owners who, who own their buildings as well, uh, and, and looking for, for relief. One of the big picture challenges we're facing right now is, uh, yes, some of the CDBG funding has, has come down, that's great, but a lot of those bigger picture, the, the multi-billion dollar, uh, packages could take months. Uh, and we, we recognize the urgent need for, for renters and mortgage holders to, to make those payments. So, uh, if there is action that the governor can take, we would encourage him to take that.
Is, is that a yes?
He's.
It's a yes, if that's the letter we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, it's about the forbearance, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Lisi, and then Counselor McGivern.
Uh, thank you. So I'm just looking at the letter, and, um, in regards to the forbearance, I don't believe that it, it's limited to commercial, uh, property owners. Uh, the way that I read it, it says, um, sorry, I just lost my spot. Yeah, "Such a forbearance should be made widely available for consumers and granted in all reasonable and prudent circumstances solely for the period of such an emergency." So it says consumers, um, there is someplace elsewhere, it didn't seem like it was limited in any way. Uh, I see. That the state would have an immediate impact, um, to grant a forbearance of payments for a mortgage for any. payments for a mortgage for any person or entity facing a financial hardship due to COVID nineteen pandemic for a period of ninety days. So that seems like a three-month forbearance to any individual or entity. So it wouldn't be limited to commercial property owners. Which I'm fully.
Yeah, I was, the mall was just being an example as to where it started from, what we're trying to do, but that is correct. Counselor McGivern?
I just quickly, I agree that, you know, the mall is part of our economic engine. It's just the example of what the the request is. If we do, if if the state does what New York did, it's relief to business owners, and it's up to ninety days, as Counselor Lisi pointed out. The the important part about this is we're showing some support. We're just weighing in. And this type of relief could go a long way to many of our business owners and consumers. And I think it's just a prudent idea to weigh in as a board.
So any other questions on this one? If no one else, then the motion is to receive, adopt, put on a proper letter form, have our names attached to it, and Ryan Allen will get it out to the governor's office.
And can we each get a copy of that as well, Todd?
Sure, sure. I'll have Ryan scan it and send it to everyone. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, that would be thirteen nothing. We do have a late file. The first late file on a Zoom, our first Zoom. It just popped up. Late file from Counselor Lisi, in light of the CDC new recommendations that all individuals wear a mask out in public, and most members of the public are not familiar with the proper mask usage or disposal. The Emergency Management Advisory Council, along with the Board of Health, Hoyoke Media, and other relative parties create an informative video ad to circulate on social media and other local media outlets. Counselor Lisi?
Receive, adopt, refer to the Emergency Management Advisory Council with a copy to the Board of Health, the Hoyoke Media, and I think the mayor's office as well makes sense because they may have, who else may be useful to include in that message. I think the order is pretty straightforward, but I think that you know, there's a lot of debate around whether or not masks in public are going to be effective, and I think that they are only effective if you are using them properly. And again, because most members of the public aren't in the habit of wearing masks, I think it's important that we do something to help folks understand how to put a mask on properly, how to avoid contaminating it, and then also how to dispose of it so that it's not at risk of contaminating other folks or or areas. So I'd like to see this happen. I think it's useful for the members of our our community.
All right, so the motion is to suspend rules, take up action tonight because it's a late file. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it is to receive, adopt that order, and send it to all the appropriate departments, adding the mayor to this list. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bacon, I'm sorry, I didn't see the hands. Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment along these lines, since we're in the public now and some of the public will be watching us. For all of the good folks that have made the cloth masks, and they do have a certain amount of effectiveness in this regard, please be sure, if you're using them, to wash them every day. That is of critical importance. So that's my PR nurse comment for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Lisi, for filing this. Maybe I, I don't think Sean's still on the call, but maybe Michael. Maybe Mike Bloomberg can help us out with this. Our role as city councilors, we're still going twenty-four seven. Just today, I was helping somebody out. And I realized, everybody has masks, and I don't. I don't know where to get them. I don't know how to get one. Yet I'm still dealing with our constituents. I'm still going to people's houses and doing the six-foot, trying to be safe as possible. But is there some way that councilors could get masks? Anyone?
Mike, go ahead, Mike. Mike, Mike, Mike has a response, and we'll go to Linda. She has an answer. Mike?
Yeah, I would suggest if you can send an email over to me, and I'll share that with the operations and logistics team so we can review what we have in stock and the rules around it. But if we can, I'll get one to you for sure.
All right, Michael, thank you.
Counselor Bacon, you have some?
And I'm not being cute, Jim, but I have seen a non-sew mask made from folding a scarf in three different ways, taking two rubber bands, and it's a very functional homemade scarf mask with a stitch involved. So if you.
You give me a lot of credit for being creative, Linda. I appreciate that, but.
All that, all that. Counselor Hernandez was up next.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the city of Hoyoke and the emergency response, the way that it was all rolled out. It was very well planned. Thank you for that and for for keeping us informed. Another thing that I wanted to say, a lot of my constituents, to go back on the file that Counselor Lisi filed, is that there's gloves disposed all over the place in the parking lot and stoping shop. I mean, for contamination purposes, this is very disturbing. So thank you, Counselor Lisi, for filing this order in a way of creating awareness and how to properly dispose of all of these items so the contamination can be contained.
Counselor? Well, the question, or?
I was going to say, if you want to amend it so that the late file reads masks and gloves.
Okay, so motion would be to amend to add gloves as well to the mask order?
Thank you.
All those in favor? All opposed? Now, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thanks, Jim, for that that question. And if you need a mask, my daughter is a nurse at Hoyoke Hospital emergency room. She's made probably close to a hundred masks for a lot of her coworkers. So if you do need one, I got a, I got a couple extra, and we can get you one. Really creative thing, when a lot of people are doing, a lot of nurses especially, and people are actually donating material so they can make the mask. So I'd be happy to get you one.
Mr. President?
Wait, wait, hold on. It was Counselor Anderson Burgos, and then I know Libby's got her hand up again, and Howie, I heard you. So Counselor Anderson Burgos.
So I heard a few suggestions. Jimmy, one of the suggestions I would I would make is handkerchiefs. I have a few of them. If you need one or a couple, let me know. Handkerchiefs also work. And another thing I wanted to mention, I know that if if this goes public, and it should, that we require people while out in public to be wearing masks, please keep in mind that you cannot put a mask on like a two-year-old. There's a certain age limit that you should not be putting masks. We need to get this information out to the public so that they do this the right way and the safe way. And and that's why we were all elected, to make sure that we address these concerns to the public and that we address them well. That's all.
Counselor Grady, do you have a question? I heard your voice.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you're talking about masks. Some people are using the cloth mask, and they're using coffee filters inside, which is another way to to create a safer situation. But I wanted to talk on behalf of myself as a counselor and on behalf of the senior citizens in Hoyoke and all the citizens, and give a vote of gratitude and thanks to Ryan Allen and Mike Bloomberg and all those guys who set up this hookup, so that all the citizens of Hoyoke tune in and see that their government is still in action. And I think they're they're the seniors especially, who have been locked up in their house for quite some time. I shouldn't say locked up, but who have been in our houses for for quite some time, really appreciate the efforts of of the council to make this happen, and especially thanks to Ryan Allen and Mike Bloomberg for this setup.
And Scott, let's not forget Scott from Hoyoke Media. He's.
Oh, absolutely. Scott, 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 too. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. And Counselor Hernandez, I see your hands up.
I just wanted to, I know that when Counselor Tomlin was referring that his daughter works in the hospital, she's a nurse. I just wanted to thank you, Counselor Tomlin, and can you please thank your daughter? She took care of my mother, elderly mother that went to the hospital, and she was like so supportive of her, I couldn't go in with her. So I want to thank you and your daughter.
I'll let her know. Thank you.
Well, with regard, that's thirteen zero. Well, that, there is no other late file. This draws an end to to our first-ever Zoom meeting as a full council. I thank everyone for for working through this. This is actually very good. I see the lovely hat by Counselor Anderson Burgos. I hope everyone stays safe. If you have any questions at all on anything, do not hesitate to contact us. This is going to be an ongoing process to make sure it runs a little more smoothly, but for everyone involved, everyone at home, thank you very much. I wish you all the best, and, you know, please stay safe. Thank you very much. Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, all those opposed? Have a wonderful, wonderful night.
Likewise.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.